Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May 23, Monthly Board of Education Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Mrs. Lavelle, can we please have a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mr. Doring?
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Here.
Mrs. Raccio?
Here.
Ms. Regan?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Roth?
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Nine members present and voting.
Thank you again. And tonight, we will start with our student board representatives from Lyman Hall. We have Erin. Welcome, come on up. Tell us what's happening.
Good evening. So, things are starting to wind down at the school as the year, the school year is coming to a close. This past Thursday, May 19th, Senior Macy Boucary, along with the help of the Lyman Hall Culinary Arts Program, hosted an event called In Good Taste on the town green. Alumni from the Culinary Arts Program joined this event to promote their businesses and help with the project. It was a very successful event and many people showed up to support Macy. As you can see from the sunburn on my forehead, the seniors had their outing today at Holiday Hill. The day consisted of many competitions, sports, and food, and everyone had a great time. It is a big week for the seniors. Their prom is on Friday at Anthony's Ocean View. Everyone is excited to have a normal prom and make fun memories. On Wednesday, the 25th, the Scholarship Night for Lyman Hall will be held at the school to recognize and award the seniors who won scholarships. To recognize the academic excellence of students with a 3.9 GPA for seven semesters, Varsity Scholar Night will be held on June 1st in the Lyman Hall Auditorium. Finals for seniors will start on June 7th and will begin on June 9th for the rest of the grades. I just wanted to give a congratulations to the boys, the boys' baseball team and lacrosse team for making it to the CIC tournament. And lastly, graduation will be held on June 15th on the Lyman Hall Soccer Field. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. And from Mark T. Sheehan, Paul and Aisha? Welcome.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm recovering from a small cold, so excuse my voice, but I'm excited to report an abundance of exciting activities throughout the next couple of weeks as the school year begins to conclude. So, from the 2nd to the 18th of May, we held our testing window for students taking AP exams. On the 5th, the Districtwide Special Education Resource Fair was held in the gym and it was open to all families from the district. Our junior prom was held at Casamia Hawthorne on May 7th. And on the 10th, we held our Varsity Scholar Award Ceremony in the auditorium to celebrate seniors who have accomplished an accumulative 3.9 GPA or above. The next day, May 11th, was I've Got Plans Day, where we celebrated the future plans of our seniors with the Schoolwide College Shirt Day, pennant decorating, a photo booth, and more. On the 17th began our Sheehan Art Display, and on the 18th was the Sheehan Spring Music Concert. The National Honor Society has been organizing a fundraiser to raise money for Ukrainian organization focused on humanitarian aid. The funds raised will be presented to an organization ambassador at the final meeting on June 2nd at the Hubcap. Throughout this week, Student Council is also sponsoring End of the Year Spirit Week with themes including Beach Day, Pyjama Day, Red Carpet Day, and more. And I'll pass it on to Paul for the upcoming events through the year.
All right. As for any upcoming events happening at Sheehan, Wednesday, May 25th, we'll, we'll be held, holding the Academic Awards and Scholarship Night at 6:00 PM in the Sheehan Auditorium to recognize seniors and any other students for exemplary activity. And our senior outing will be held at Holiday Hill this Friday, May 27th. Our senior prom will be held at the Aquaterth in Southington on Saturday, May 28th. And June 7th to June 10th will be the senior final exams. And as sports wind down, spring sports will be entering their state season within the upcoming weeks. And graduation will be held in the Ricketelli Field on Wednesday, June 15th. Thank you.
I just want to take a moment and thank the student representatives. They have never disappointed. They come in front of the board every month and tell us what's happening in the schools. And it, for me, it's one of the highlights and one of the reasons that I'm here is to connect with the students. And they have been awesome. In the middle of everything else that's going on still in this COVID environment, they show up and they tell us what's happening and they've always, always presented positive news. So, I don't know if anybody else on the board has anything to say, but I just want to personally thank you because it's been wonderful to have you here every single month and you have never failed. Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Pulisy?
I'll go a little out of order for our agenda, but I'd like to say the same thing. They have been absolutely wonderful. I cannot thank the three of you enough for all of your detailed reports and sharing all of the wonderful things that have happened, the things that are coming forward in your buildings. And it's so nice to hear all of the events that are happening and all the positive things that are around that, and it's very refreshing. I wish you three all of the best moving forward. And thank you again for coming here every month and sharing all of that information. So, I wish you all the best. Come on up, I have something just little for you guys to say thank you. Okay. So, at this time, I'd like to invite up Mr. Joe Corso, Principal of Lyman Hall High School, and Mr. Enzo Zacco, the Principal of Mark T. Sheehan High School, so we can move on to recognizing our valedictorians. We'll start with that first and then our salutatorians. So, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone, and please excuse my appearance, but I too have a sunburned face from our senior picnic and was just at the first round of our SEC tournament for our baseball team in which they won. So, congratulations to them. Where's Jessica, Jessica Moro? Can you please come on up here? I'm just, I'm going to force you to stand right here as I say some nice words about you. So, this is Jessica Moro, this year's valedictorian. Her academic motivation and ability are, are at a level which most educators, educators encounter very few times in their career. Her desire to learn, achieve, and persevere exemplify a degree of maturity rarely found in high school students, especially right now with these current times that we're dealing with. Jess sets the bar extremely high for herself and as a result raises it for her peers. Her exceptionally strong intellectual ability and analytical skills, coupled with her outstanding motivation, have earned her the number one rank for the Lyman Hall Class of 2022. Jess holds herself to an extremely high standard and has amazed all who have been witness to her academic accomplishments over the years. In her senior year alone, Jess has challenged herself with an impressive 6.5 credits of advanced placement courses. And in true fashion, she has been up for that challenge. One is hard pressed to find a grade below an A on an impressive transcript of advanced placement and honors level coursework. In her junior year, Jess was named a commended student in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program, thanks to her outstanding PSAT performance. She plans to attend the University of Connecticut in the fall and is Lyman Hall recipient of the University of Connecticut Presidential Scholars Award for Valedictorians. Jess will be pursuing an undergraduate degree in pre-medicine and the Lyman Hall community looks forward to hearing about her amazing accomplishments and contributions as she furthers her education. Congratulations.
Hi, everyone, I'm Enzo Zacco, the Principal of Sheehan. I will call Brennan Legassi up, our valedictorian. Brennan is our valedictorian for the Class of 2022. Brennan is described as intelligent, talented, motivated, responsible, and very mature. Just recently, last month, he, he beat me pretty bad at a chess game. It was, it was pretty, good for him. Brennan's accomplishments are very impressive and he makes us all very proud. He possesses all the academic and personal qualities necessary to make a great impact on the world through his dedication and hard work. Aside from attaining the highest GPA out of 208 seniors, Brennan's other impressive credentials include recognition as a Sheehan Varsity Scholar, talents in the area, areas of mathematics, including taking AP Calc 1 and 2 as a junior, which is a typical senior type of, of, type of math course. And this year, he kind of hit all of our courses. So, he went on to multi-variable calculus at John Hopkins Center for Talented Youth as a senior this year. Distinction as an AP Scholar, National Merit Scholarship Finalist, U.S. Presidential Scholar Semi-finalist, Class Officer for four years, member of the Sheehan Tennis Team, Vice President of the National Honor Society, recipient of our Language Arts and Math Exemplary Awards, Lead Programmer, his, his another passion is robotics and he was a Lead Programmer for the Robotics Team, designing and programming robots for major competitions, including consulting, pretty much, with a, a company on, on doing, it was for soccer and how to improve students' soccer skills and scoring goals and he helped to develop that software to do that. So, very impressive. He's the President of our STEM Club, Mock Trial and Math Teams. He also serves as, in a number of volunteer roles, helping his school and his community, which is just as important to him as his academics. He has mentored middle school mock trial students. He's taught an SAP, SAT prep course offered to high school students at which helped over 40 students prepare for their SATs. He, he has volunteered at the Connecticut STEM Academy, introducing younger students to robotics and other facets of STEM careers. And congratulations Brennan on your accomplishments and your recognition as the valedictorian for the Class of 2022. Next year, Brennan will be attending Yale University, pursuing coursework in the field of computer science and artificial intelligence. Congratulations.
All right, Elena, are you here? There she is. Come on up, Elena. Elena Bielish, this year is salutatorian. Elena has grasped the opportunity to challenge herself with the most demanding program of study available to students in all four years at Lyman Hall. She ranks an impressive number two out of 234, earning a place in the top 1% of this year's graduating seniors. Looking at her transcript, one can see the depth of her core study and her marks of excellence that are due in no small measure to her unwavering work ethic and quest for knowledge. What Elena accomplishes outside of the classroom is equally as impressive as her academic achievements. Most notice, notably, has been her commitment to serve as a student leader at Lyman Hall and volunteer services throughout Wallingford. In her junior year, Elena was inducted into the National Honor Society for her academic excellence, leadership, and civic engagement. She's an active member of the Gay-Straight Alliance, the Latin Club, Art Club, Ski Club, American Sign Language Club, and Unified Girls Choir. She's earned over 200, 200 hours of community service with a variety of organizations. She is a valuable member of our Best Buddies Program, where non-disabled peers connect with disabled peers for fun out-of-school activities. Elena also works with our Unified Theater Program, which provides the same students with the opportunity to create a performance together onstage. Through Crew, the Community Revitalization Efforts of Wallingford, students travel to help with national disaster relief. In addition, during the school closure due to COVID-19, Elena tutored middle school students that were struggling with online learning and I'm sure many of her peers also. As a student athlete, Elaine is the captain of the Lyman Hall Swim and Dive Team. She's earned her varsity level letter and was an SEC and state qualifier from 2018 through 2021. She's an SEC All-Academic Team Member and in 2020 was recognized as the Record Journal Scholar-Athlete. She was Wallingford's YMCA Youth Member of the Year in 2018, where she also volunteers in their youth aquatics program to teach kids ages four to six how to swim. Thank you, Elena. Well done and congratulations.
Paul Burkett, come on up. Paul Burkett is our salutatorian for the Class of 2022 at Mark T. Sheehan High School. Congratulations, Paul. It is my pleasure to speak on behalf of Paul, who is our salutatorian. Paul is a charismatic, impressive, and ambitious young man with a strong drive to succeed. Paul possesses strong academic and personal qualities that will no doubt lead him towards success. He is a hard worker with a strong work ethic, both in the classroom and in his extracurricular and athletic activities. Aside from attaining the impressive status as the class salutatorian, Paul's other impressive credentials include recognition of, as a Varsity Scholar, Excellence Awards over the past four years in French, English, Algebra, Statistics, and Chemistry. He was recognized as a Record Journal Scholar-Athlete and that goes across many towns, so that was a great highlight for him. Class M Track Honorable Mention. He, along with a, along with three, a few others, hold the school record for the 4x100 relay race in track. So, that's very impressive. He is the captain of the indoor and outdoor track teams, Student Council President, Research Committee Member for the Sikorsky STEM Team, National Honor Society Activities Chair, Powderpuff Captain, Chair, Powderpuff Chair-Captain, DECA Vice President, Interact Club Treasurer, Member of the Positive Impact Math Teams and Debate Club. Paul has completed a great deal of community service as well. He's volunteered for the community revitalization efforts of Wallingford. He's volunteered at Masonic Care, working with patients, volunteers at a food pantry at a local church, among other volunteer activities. Congratulations, Paul, on your accomplishment and recognition as the salutatorian of the Sheehan Class of 2022. Next year, Paul will be attending Boston College, majoring in computer science and economics. Congratulations, Paul.
Congratulations to the four of you. That is a wonderful accomplishment for all four of you. You should be very proud. I'm sure your parents are as well. Well-deserved, all of that hard work. Good for you. Next, we'd, I'd like to invite Mr. Corso, Principal of Lyman Hall High School Backup, Mr. Zacco, Principal of Mark T. Sheehan High School, Mr. Snyder, Principal of Dag Hammershald, and Mr. Bologna, who is the Assistant Principal of Moran Middle School, to help us introduce and acknowledge the, the students who have received, excuse me, the Cabe Leadership Award. So, these awards, these student awards are for students in grade seven and eight and also in high school. It's two students that are recognized from each of our schools and they're eligible to receive this Student Leadership Award based on their leadership skills, which include willingness to take on challenges, ability to make difficult decisions, concerns for others, ability to work with others, their willingness to commit to a project, ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor commitments. And so, at this time, I'd like to invite up our principals again so that they can acknowledge the students from their school.
Elena and Peyton from Lyman Hall. If you wouldn't know, I'm coming up. Elena Dantonio and Peyton Durant.
I'll invite up Emily Jazinski and Jayden Campore.
I would like to invite up Catherine Russell and David Forgion.
From Dag Hammershald, I'd like to invite up 7th grader Tanner Del Vecchio and 8th grader Sarah Lazajowski.
Round of applause for our wonderful students representing all.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you again and we wish you the best of luck. Thank you. The next students we'd like to honor are, are award recipients, who I had the pleasure of having a luncheon with them, are SCASA recipients. And these students are students that we honored at a luncheon back at the beginning of May. And these students are students that we recognize for their community service to others, their academic abilities, and leadership to the school community. So, I'm going to have our admin go ahead and introduce their students from their schools.
From Dag Hammershald, proud to announce 8th grader Sawani Obas.
From James H. Moran Middle School, Mae McDonald.
From Mark T. Sheehan High School, Vincent Antianza and Vivian Rodriguez.
And finally, from Lyman Hall, we have Michaela Cow and Sophia Wang. I don't believe either of them could make it tonight.
Congratulations to all of our recipients. Don't go too far. Next, we're going to recognize our students for scores of distinction on the Scholastic Achievement Test. So, that's a score of 650 or higher. So, I'm going to start with Lyman Hall High School. Mr. Corso, do you want to read the names of your students?
All right. So, this year's students from Lyman Hall, Megan Ahern. Ryan Ardoini, probably not back from baseball yet. Elena Bielish. Michaela Cow. Lauren Castle. Zev Sella. Sophia Donath. Emma Draghi. Gianna Draghi. Ciara Alexis Gatto. Parth Jal Khankar. Jonathan Kirby. Just going to give us a chance to catch up here. Yeah. I realized it a little late. Just so I don't miss, I think I left off with Jonathan Kirby. Next would be Braden Kowalik. Patrick McGuire. Jessica Moro. Daniel Pettit. Calista Potter. Liliana Tangredi. Daniel Tia Dossio. Aiden Van Houten. And Paige Wentzle.
From Mark T. Sheehan High School. You ready? All right? Oh, sorry. And from Sheehan. Brendan Barberino. Brendan Bradford. Paul Burkett. Alana Dwyer. Aisha Garg. Heather Ray Gadaun. Dylan Gianati. Connor Howard. Brennan Legassi. Shannon McKenna. Lily Nagy Laurent. Raj Patel. Jack Taylor. And Jennifer Yoder. Congratulations, Sheehan.
Okay. This next award, I am going to invite up Mrs. Sashi Galvin, who is our Adult Ed Director, to help me introduce this next recipient. So, this year, we are recognizing Pam Moran as the 2022 Connecticut Association of Adults and Continuing Education Educator of the Year. So, Pam, if you can come on up and join us and congratulations.
Thank you, Danielle. Good evening, everybody. It's my honor and pleasure to introduce Pam Moran, who has been awarded the Educator of the Year from CASE. For people who don't know, this is the Adult Education Association that offers to phenomenal educators. What can I say about Pam Moran? She's been there 30-plus years. 33, she corrects me. She does that all the time. 33 years as an educated adult ed. Many of the words I use could be cliche, but that's what she is. She's a master teacher who's organized, who puts her students first. COVID, as you know, brought all kinds of changes to many people. Adult ed- as you know, brought all kinds of changes to many people. Adult education was no exception. We had to learn, when I say we, the staff and the students, had to learn a lot of new technology, new software, really quickly, so we could help our students, help their children also. Pam Moran did not hesitate for one moment to pick up and learn every new technology that was there for adult educators. She learned it. In fact, I would just go to her and say, Pam, how about you try this? And in her own time, she would try it. She'd give me the pros and cons and give me, do you want the short version or the long version? Is what she would always tell me. I said, whichever makes least money for me as far as budget goes. And then she'll come up with the third version. So she has been helping me in doing what's best for the students. Again, she puts students first. She's the epitome of what you would call a master teacher. So thank you, Pam, for all your years of service.
Thank you for all you do. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations again, Pam. The next part of our agenda, we are going to move on to honoring our retirees. So I'm going to start us off. We've had a wonderful opportunity tonight. We had a little reception before to recognize our honorees, our retirees, excuse me, in a little reception. But tonight, I want to thank both of our administrators and our certified staff, our teachers who are retiring. They have dedicated tons of time and effort to this district, to our students, to our staff, colleagues, to the families, to make sure that students are first and to do what's best for our students. So tonight, it's a wonderful honor to also recognize them as we move through this evening. So the first person I'd like to recognize, and I'm going to ask if she can just stand for a moment, is Mrs. Christine Friend. She is the principal of Cook Hill Elementary School. If ever somebody's name was indicative of their character, it would be Chris Friend. Chris, the principal of Cook Hill School for the past eight years, has been a true friend to everyone she meets, especially to me. Chris and I met eight years ago in the interview process at the very end. So Chris was hired for Cook Hill, and at that time, I was hired for Pond Hill Elementary School. So we met right at the beginning and have had a wonderful eight years as colleagues together. A great illustration of this noted by a veteran Cook Hill teacher. She said, eight years ago, we said hello to our new principal, Christine Friend, at Cook Hill Town Meeting with the whole school. During her tenure, Christine has been a true leader of our school. Chris Friend is someone who has helped her school families and staff through some challenging times. She's never hesitated to show compassion and understanding, and she immediately stepped up to help. She never asked for recognition in return for the selfless acts of kindness. She has always had an open-door policy to listen and support our Cook Hill staff and family. Christine has always made time for students as well. She was given special cards and pictures daily from a former student who started making them a kindergarten and continued all the way through the second grade. Christine always made time to acknowledge this by visiting her in the classroom. A truly dedicated educator, an outstanding colleague, and a dear friend, Chris will be heading up to Maine to spend time with her amazing family, but I have a feeling she'll never be far away from the classroom. And if an opportunity does present itself, how lucky those kids up north will be. Thank you, Chris, for all you have done for the Wallingford Public Schools and for the Cook Hill community. I wish you all the best. At this time, I'd like to invite up Mrs. Carrie Latour, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction.
Good evening, everyone. I get the distinct honor and pleasure to honor Sashi Govin, our Director of Adult Education. Sashi Govin, on her retirement, after 25 years of serving students as an educator, including nine years in Wallingford as an educational leader at both Dag Hammershold Middle School and Wallingford Education Program, Sashi has, by her desire, passion, and commitment to student success, created a dynamic and highly regarded program. Six years ago, Sashi came to the Adult Education Program with confidence and calm patience. With her leadership, she brought our Adult Education Program into the future. With genuine care and concern, she took the staff, and especially the students, under her wing. While we will miss Sashi immensely, her work has set the bar high for our Adult Education Program and our students, staff, and community are much better because of Sashi's vision. Sashi will be enjoying her retirement with her recently-retired husband and her family, and has plenty of wonderful trips planned this fall.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Amy Turner, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, to honor our next retiree.
Good evening, everyone. The next retiree we have to honor was unable to make it today. She is out of town. However, we would like to recognize Donna Curtis, our Coordinator of Elementary of Special Education, in her retirement. After 26 years as a speech and language therapist and administrator, serving in various capacities, all of them in Wallingford Public Schools, we recognize and thank Donna Curtis for her longevity, impact, and dedication to Wallingford. Donna's commitment and dedication to the students, staff, and families of Wallingford is unparalleled. Her colleagues will tell you she is always there to find solutions to complex problems or to lend a hand with the team when needed. Over the years, people also know that Donna is always at work early, and she's often one of the last people to leave for the day. She's always working to improve the programming in our district and to meet the needs of our students. Donna is a caring friend and colleague and always follows up to make sure you are doing okay when a crisis hits. Although retiring from the school system, Donna has no plans of slowing down anytime soon. She plans on traveling and spending time with her family. We wish Donna all the best in everything she does. Thank you for making a difference.
At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Joseph Corso, Principal of Lyman Hall High School, to announce our next retiree.
All right, thank you, everyone. I have three retirees tonight. None of them could be here, unfortunately, but I'm going to say a few nice words about all of them. One a little bit shorter than the other because she retired minutes ago, basically, so we didn't have time to prepare. But congratulations to her, and I have quite a few I can say. So our first is Pat Taylor. Pat has been a teacher at Lyman Hall for 23 years. In that time, she's educated over 2,000 young men and women in both psychology and U.S. history. During that time, Pat always maintained high standards and expectations. She successfully prepared hundreds of students to successfully meet the challenges of an AP Psych exam and has mentored many student teachers from surrounding colleges and universities. As the head of the Social Studies Department, that was a steady voice and leader as many policy changes were being implemented and shifted throughout Common Core and Mastery-Based Learning. She organized guest speakers and unique professional development opportunities for the Social Studies Department. That was also a Lyman Hall graduate. Her dedication to Lyman Hall has always been something that I've admired and the rest of her colleagues have admired. From my first days and many others at Lyman Hall, Pat has been a part of all our events, where she's there as a colleague and a friend in a time of need and celebration. She's been the junior class advisor, who's organized a junior prom for years, and anyone who's been to or attended or worked to organize junior prom, or any prom, knows how difficult that can be. We wish Pat well in her retirement. I hope it's filled with quiet mornings, by the lake, and many rounds of golf. So good luck, Pat, and thank you for all you've done for Lyman Hall. All right, our next retiree is Eileen Macri. Eileen Macri has had a tremendously successful career as a teacher with over 24 years of experience. Although she hasn't been at Lyman Hall long, only a small snapshot of her career as a special education teacher, she's left a huge mark on everyone at Lyman Hall. Her knowledge and expertise with academics, especially in the area of reading, has made many of our teachers someone whose shoes it will be very hard to fill when she leaves. Not only is she an amazing teacher in the classroom, but she's done so much outside our school hours as well. She's supported students by showing up to support them with both their school-related and non-school-related activities and events. This year especially, she's volunteered her time with our Social Skills Breakfast Club and covering some of our Unified Sports Events while many teachers have been unavailable for obvious reasons. She's been a tremendous asset to Lyman Hall. She has a few goals: to successfully help students become more fluent in reading, which she's mastered; working with students and families to best prepare students for their transition, both coming into and exiting high school, again mastered; implementing top-notch specialized instruction to a diverse group of learners, mastered once again; and finally, being an irreplaceable member of our family here at Lyman Hall. Thank you for all you've done, Eileen. I wish you could have been here with us tonight, and please enjoy your retirement. So Donna Mitchell has recently retired, and she has taught at Lyman Hall, and I hope this doesn't embarrass her, long enough that she actually was my wife's teacher when she graduated from Lyman Hall. She's been a tremendous asset to the science program and has long been a rock helping keep that department moving. She has taught our best and brightest in our science department and taken them through AP Biology and preparing them for the future. She's done a tremendous job. In my short seven years at Lyman Hall, she has just been one teacher that I've, you've never had to worry about. She shows up for work. She does a tremendous job, cares about all of her students, and educates them and prepares them for that next level, whatever that might be. So Donna, thank you. I wish you could have been here, and please enjoy your retirement. And I think I'm supposed to call up the man in yellow, Mr. Dan Bologna, to take it on from here.
Good evening, everyone. I myself am getting over some allergies, so I'll do my best to get through this without my voice cracking. If it does, though, I'm glad to see it's being recorded. So I'll be speaking about four retirees this evening, one of which is with us, who I will save the best for last. The first person I would like to recognize is Donna Neary. Donna Neary was a PE teacher at Moran since 1999. And you know, there are times in which you think about when someone retires and they're leaving, the practical implication, I need to find someone for this position. But that's not even close to the whole picture with Donna. It's the little things that you forget about. The fact that she's always there before both principals in the morning. It's the fact that she would have everything ready for buses before they got there. It was the fact she could give us details about all the athletics taking place at both Sheehan and Lyman Hall on a daily basis and how all of our former students were doing. I miss the updates about Florida from her. I miss the, and if you know her, I miss the escapades that she and her four-year-old neighbor, Lincoln, would get into on a daily basis. And personally, I really miss the fact that I had another Giants fan as a part of Moran that I could share my misery with. Donna was an integral part of Moran in so many different ways, and a beloved face to see back when she does visit, and she does often. But I know she's enjoying her retirement. So congratulations, Donna. The next retiree I'd like to speak about is Winnie Peeler. Winnie Peeler's been at Moran since 2022. She retired as of January 1st of this year, and has been a teacher who's providing, who has provided a lot of nurture to sixth graders since I've been at Moran. Winnie was always someone who was first in the building and without a doubt last to leave, whether it was working with students after school, being a part of after-school clubs, or just making sure she had everything set up for the next day. I always liked going into Winnie's classroom because you would see the best thing that is, the best way to showcase a middle school classroom: organized chaos. You would see students who were showing their love of reading, who were engaging in lively debates, and you saw someone who was willing to just let kids be themselves. She was someone who always put kids first and was willing to go above and beyond to make sure students felt at home in Moran. And I can tell you, when sixth graders come in from either Fritz or Parker Farms, they need that face to feel like they're at home in a new building. She was always talking about her time in Nova Scotia and spending time with her grandchildren. And although we miss her greatly, I know she's getting the most out of both of those things in her retirement. So congratulations, Winnie. The next retiree is Eileen Ziegler. Eileen was only with us at Moran for one year. I'd say past ten. She's still there for another 17 days. But her presence was immediately felt. Many people know that the idea of a spreadsheet makes me way too happy. And if it's color-coded, I'm just like, it's the best. I don't know if she knew that, but before school even started, she emailed me this color-coded spreadsheet. She looked at her caseload of students. She said, I think this is when I want to meet with these kids, with these kids. This is when they should have this class and this class. I was in heaven. Eileen is one of those teachers, too, that, you know, she gets to know every little detail about every single kid. And she came to us this year knowing a fair amount of background information about kids from Fritz from last year. But by the end of the year, by right now, you wouldn't know who those kids were. She knows every little detail about every kid that she sees, and she knows who they are as a person, not just as a learner. So we are sorry to see her go, but I know I certainly appreciate all she did for our sixth graders this year, and I wish her the best of luck in her retirement. Last but not least, I would like to recognize Mrs. Donna O'Day. Donna has been a reading interventionist at Moran since 2011 and has been at Moran since 1999. Donna has the two qualities that I absolutely love in a teacher. She is always willing to help, whether it be fellow colleagues in the Language Arts Department. If someone doesn't know how to run a report, Donna knows how to run a report. If someone needs to cover a classroom, Donna is always willing to help out. But even better, she knows when to ask for help. I will miss the mornings when Donna comes in. And you have to understand, Donna could teach a class on how to be polite. Whenever she has a question, she will start off with, Dan, I know you're busy. I just need a second for you to answer me a question. And every time, after I give an answer, and hopefully I give one that answers her question, she says, Dan, thank you so much. I know you're going to be busy all day. I really appreciate it. And I'm not exaggerating that that is every single time. I can also not tell you how many times I've walked into Donna's classroom, and she is on the phone with the help desk from Renaissance. Between Donna and I, I think we have worn out our welcome in terms of how many times we have contacted that company for support. But it's because of how much she cares. Donna is a consummate professional. She is a stickler for exactly what she needs to do. And her positive and calm attitude is something I love, especially on the eighth-grade floor. We are going to miss you, and I have enjoyed the past five and a half years of working with you, and I wish you best in your retirement. Thank you, Donna. And next, I'd like to welcome up the Principal of Dag Hammershold Middle School, Mr. Todd Snyder.
It is a great pleasure and honor to be here, to speak on behalf of Dag Hammershold's very own Mrs. Debbie McMahon. There she is. So Mrs. McMahon started her teaching career in 1987 at a private school in New Haven, and then came to Wallingford in 1989 at Highland Elementary as a special education teacher. and then came to Wallingford in 1989 at Highland Elementary as a special education teacher. The original plan was to be an art therapist, but it became clear to her that working with children was more of a passion than analyzing some art. And we're glad you've made that change. After Highland, Mrs. McMahon went to Moran Middle School and extended a life skills program that was already in the district. This program assisted students with intellectual disabilities and really was the precursor to the extensive programs that we have today for our students with these challenges. After Moran Middle School, Mrs. McMahon went to teach at Harvest Park to the middle and high school students. After those five years, Mrs. McMahon went to Moses Y. Beach for three school years as the desire at that time was to expand her talents while working with younger students. Then in 2015, Mrs. McMahon came to Dag Hammershold. And in these last seven years, Mrs. McMahon has been a special education case manager and resource teacher. Now, this speech is a little premature as Mrs. McMahon is planning on retiring this January, so while this is not an official goodbye, we certainly want to thank you. And I think that's really all that I want to say and all we're trying to say is thank you for everything that you've done for the students and families of Wallingford and for Dag Hammershold. So, hold that, well, we'll hold that for a second. I'm almost done, I promise. But Debbie's plans in retirement is to continue to work with young people in some capacity. But the first priority is to spend more time with family and friends. She's looking forward to also doing some volunteer work, which is something that came up most recently, and some creative hobbies as well. But traveling will also be a focus with thoughts on Italy, maybe Nova Scotia with her husband Bob. And we truly wish both of you all the health and happiness in retirement. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Eric Carbone, principal of Mary G. Fritz.
Good evening. Denise and Jane, I brought the ultimate retirement gift this evening, brevity, so we'll be quick. I'm here to recognize two outstanding teachers from Mary G. Fritz Elementary School. The first is Denise Baker. Denise Baker proudly served the Wallingford Public School System for over 38 years. Starting back in 1984, when I was 11, Denise spent her entire career helping our special education population overcome academic, social, and emotional challenges. She helped those students realize their potential. She worked at Cook Hill Elementary School, Yalesville Elementary School, and Mary G. Fritz. She is known for her straightforward approach and her collaborative nature and her willingness to help out with anything for anyone at any time. Denise is looking forward to spending time with her grandchild due very soon and enjoying the beaches of Rhode Island. We wish her much happiness and good health in retirement. Congratulations, Denise. Mrs. Jane Malone has proudly served the Wallingford Public Schools for over 35 years in a variety of roles. She is dual-certified and taught special education to students at Highland and Pond Hill before making the transition to Grade Four at Highland and eventually at Fritz. Anyone who has seen Jane teach knows how passionate she is about teaching and her desire to always, always give her best. She too will be a grandma soon and looks forward to spending time with family, traveling, and enjoying the shoreline in Clinton. Congratulations, Jane, and best of luck to you as well. Thank you. I would now like to introduce my colleague from Pond Hill Elementary School, Mrs. Kristin Valero.
Good evening, everybody. I have the honor and privilege to talk about three amazing educators that are about to retire from our school. Only one could make it tonight, so I will save her for the end. But I will start with Mrs. Raquel Wacquina, who has served Wallingford Public Schools since 2013. I had the privilege of working with her during her time at Pond Hill School. Raquel is passionate about, passionate about serving our bilingual population. She has gone above and beyond for the students and their families. We wish her all the best in her retirement. The second retiree is Mrs. Donna Richards. Donna Richards has been a special education teacher for many years, one of the most knowledgeable and passionate educators I have ever worked with. Her students are her number-one priority, and they know it. Donna has certainly left her mark on Pond Hill School. There are often times that you can walk into her classroom and she'll snag you up to go on a scavenger hunt with all of her kids throughout the building. Their smiles tell the story of what Donna has done for them. We will miss her, and we wish her well in her next chapter. And our final retiree, who is here with us tonight, is Mrs. Joan Reinhardt. Joan Reinhardt has been a special education teacher in Wallingford for many years. She truly enjoys the time she spends with her students. You can tell by the constant smile on her face. She celebrates all the accomplishments of our students and oftentimes brings them right into the office so that we can share in the celebration. Joan, we wish you fun hiking with your dogs and endless time and hugs from your grandchildren. Enjoy your retirement. And at this time, I'll introduce Mrs. Christina Kylie, principal of E.C. Stevens Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. I have the privilege of speaking about three retirees this evening. Unfortunately, only one could be here with us, so I'm going to save hers for last. Julie Bukowski. For all the years I've known Julie, Julie's had an ocean theme in her Grade Two classroom. One may think, "How cute, what a fun theme." Well, this theme is very well-suited. The ocean ebbs and flows, providing for each living thing exactly what it needs, and that's the way Julie's classroom has ran. Julie would ebb and flow, providing each student exactly what they need so they can be their best self and be able to flourish. Julie created a place that was safe for students while holding them to high standards. She was constantly reflecting and making improvements. Julie has always been a team player and has taken new teachers and long-term subs under her wing, co-teaching, and helping to set them up for success. Over the years, Julie was a vital part of our Building Safety Committee, working to make adjustments to our school to ensure safety was always at the forefront. While Julie will be moving on to a new chapter, the ebb and flow she created will remain ever so strong in the years to come. Thank you to Julie Bukowski, and congratulations. Dawn Morris. When I think of the Stars Autism Program, Dawn Morris immediately pops into my mind. Dawn has truly made the Stars Program what it is today. The program started with Dawn's class and has now grown to three classes. Over the years, Dawn took each new teacher and staff member under her wing and gave them the tools and supports they needed to be successful. One day, when Dawn was absent, one of the paraeducators in the program said, "When I encounter a difficult situation, I picture what Dawn would do in that moment." And she did just that. In addition, Dawn provided the structured environment that helped her students acquire the skills needed to move forward. Dawn advocated for her students while partnering with their families. She was ready to engage in difficult conversations if it meant benefiting her students. Dawn's leadership in the autism program has been instrumental and will leave a forever imprint. Thank you, Dawn, and congratulations. And lastly, Renee Jersey, who's here with us tonight. When you walk into Renee's Special Ed Resource Room, you see many, many manipulatives, books, games, and more. This has come in handy over the years. When a parent would say, "I'm looking for a way to practice fluency at home," Renee would quickly chime in, "I have just the resource for you." Or a teacher would say, "I'm looking for a book with a final E pattern to use with a student." Renee would jump in, "Look no further. I have just what you're looking for." No matter the student's age and/or needs, Renee had the tools to meet that student right where they were. Renee's love of reading spilled far beyond her Special Ed caseload. On more than one occasion, Renee ran a school book fair, which allowed all 300-plus students to pick out a just-right book from her own book collection. And each student got to take that book home. While it's been a few years since our last Jersey Book Fair, I can still picture the smiles it resulted in. Renee has been a mentor to teachers across the building and the district and has been instrumental in helping aspiring teachers to reach their dreams. Renee's made unbelievable connections with families, always resulting in a positive PPT or team meeting. While I'm certain that some of Renee's books and manipulatives will remain with us at Stevens, so will her impactful imprint. Thank you for all you've done for E.C. Stevens, Renee. You're going to be truly missed. Congratulations.
Thank you, and congratulations again to all of our retirees. To just think, you know, we have, we come together every month as a board, and over the past several months, we've been accepting retirements. And we sit here and we add up the years and the collective years of knowledge that leaves us and departs Wallingford this year is truly, truly amazing. You have all impacted students and student, the countless students in our district, and you have impacted our community through what you have done. And we are all very, very grateful. We wish you nothing but health and happiness in your retirement. Are there any board members who'd like to say anything? Mr. Vado.
I know it's late. I just had to say a few words. First of all, to the retirees, thank you so much for everything that you've done. I admire all the work that you've done, the principals and the teachers. Teachers are the best, let me tell you. Okay, I have to speak just quickly to the students here that are still here. The list, excuse me. I think I've been doing this for 20-plus years, and this meeting is always one of the better ones, the greatest ones, because we honor so many children and for all their accomplishments. And that list seems to grow more and more each year. It's amazing. And I just wanted you to know that, those of you that are here, you are the fruits of our labor. You show, for the amount of time that we put into this job and making sure that things are available for you as far as the budget is concerned, sports, activities, everything, you make it all so worthwhile. I cannot believe the grades, the scores, the amount of community involvement. It's just amazing. And you make us proud. You make Wallingford proud. And I wish you would become epidemic because what you aspire to is fantastic, and it's so great. And thank your parents because they are the ones that have guided you to this point and have probably set a good example for you. So I just wanted to say, I'm sorry I took up more time, but I just had to congratulate all of you in my own way. Thank you.
Very well said, Mr. Vado. Thank you. That will conclude our portion of the presentation and awards for this evening. And I know our meetings are riveting, and you are all looking forward to this highlight of your week. If you would like to depart now, should your children have homework to do or something else to get to, now would be an opportune time. And I'll just wait for a moment before we enter into public comment. Thank you. Okay, I think we're just about there. Are there any members of the public who would like to make any public comments this evening? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. That was Mr. Vado, seconded by Mr. Ross. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We are now in executive session. Thank you. Welcome back to the Board of Education meeting. I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
That would be Mr. Ross, seconded by Mr. Vado. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. We are out of executive session. Moving on to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve from the consent agenda, items 7.1 through 7.18, 7.20 through 7.22, and 7.24 through 7.35.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
That's Mr. Ross, seconded by Mr. Doring. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number eight, items removed from the consent agenda. 7.19, Approval of Proposed Adoption Revision to Policy 6145.81, Student Fundraising Activities and the Regulation, Administrative Regulation Regarding the Student Fundraising Activities. I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Doring, as you requested it to come off consent.
Thank you. So my issue was with the administrative regulation. It had previously said under Section 3, "The Board does not recommend door-to-door solicitation for the sake of student safety." And that was removed, and I have an issue with that being removed. I could see that someone could view door-to-door solicitation as a good way to do fundraising. However, I do view it as a safety concern to have students going door-to-door, especially if you don't have proper parameters such as adult supervision. And therefore, I take issue with it being removed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Doring, I'll just say, from my viewpoint, I also agree with you that I don't think door-to-door solicitation is safe. However, I also, I'm hesitant to put in a policy or a regulation that we can't enforce. And beyond the school hours, in the evenings, on the weekends, what parents choose to do with their children, I just felt like this would be something very difficult for us to enforce. And that's why I think I was even the one who suggested just taking the sentence out and try and, instead of saying, "We endorse or we don't endorse." Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I, my kids went door-to-door, but either I or their mother always went with them. And most of the things that we were getting now where they're going door-to-door, they're going immediate neighborhood. I don't know, excepted trick-or-treat at Halloween. I don't think anybody goes out of their immediate neighborhood to sell stuff to their friends and relatives. And again, like Tammy says, we can't tell the parents that they can't let their kids go sell door-to-door. We can take care of it when they're in school on the property, but once they're home, if the parents want to do door-to-door solicitation for a fundraiser, that's the parents' business, not ours.
Any other discussion? Mr. Doring.
Thank you, and I understand that it could be difficult to enforce. However, my thought process would be that if this is a school-sanctioned activity, if we think that this is bad for student safety, that we just need to find a way to enforce it.
You noted. Anybody else? Okay. As this is an item moved from consent agenda, Mrs. Lavelle, could you please? Oh, wait a minute. We, so we're discussing. Can I have a motion to approve 7.19 after discussion?
So moved.
Second. So I have a first and a second to approve 7.19. Mrs. Lavelle, can you do a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mr. Doring?
No.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds? Mrs. Roscoe? Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Vado? Mrs. Raccio?
And I'm a yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item removed from the consent agenda is item 7.23, Approval of Proposed Adoption Revision Policy 6154, Homework and Regulation 6154A. Homework and Regulation 6154A, Administrative Regulation Regarding Homework. And once again, Mr. Doring, this was removed at your request. This is your item.
Thank you. So I was trying to pull up the exact wording on my computer. My computer is running a little slow, but I could still talk to what my issue with this was. And I discussed this during the instructional committee meeting as well. In these documents, it states that the purpose of homework is solely to reinforce what was already done in the classroom. In other words, not to be previewing what will be done in the next class. And that is what I take issue with. I'm sure a lot of us are familiar with the concept of a flipped classroom where students are doing some of the learning on their own. And I don't like the idea of the district policy not allowing that to be taking place.
Any other discussion? I will say,
Passeretti has her hand up.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, you weren't fast enough.
I wasn't. I wasn't. It's very late. My hand gets tired late at night. So I think we discussed this already, but one of my questions having to do with that line in the policy is, does that eliminate the option for a teacher to give reading the next chapter as homework?
No, I don't believe it does. It's no different than studying for a test or reading a chapter prior to a conversation, in my opinion. So when you're starting a unit of study, say, the American Revolution, you are not going to, on the very first day with no prior knowledge, tell the students to do a bunch of reading to then go into the class the next day to do an assignment on their own and then grade it. You want to give students the opportunity to prepare in advance, regardless of the level. And assigning an article or a chapter to read is perfectly acceptable to do.
So if I'm reading the policy, that's not what it says because a reading assignment is considered homework. In my mind.
It can be. It's also habits of work. So homework, when you're thinking about written homework, I wouldn't want someone to bring home a written piece of homework that they needed to do that they had no knowledge of how to do it. Take math, for example. That would be a very frustrating experience, I would imagine, for students. Assigning 20 minutes of reading or assigning a chapter to read when you are talking about text structure or U.S. history or anything of the like, you're allowing students to read. There isn't an assignment attached to that. And so when we're talking about providing students an opportunity to grow and learn within a unit of study, reading prior to, you're not going to pre-read everything to a student at a high school level or a middle school level. You are going to have them read, and then you're going to discuss it in class. So that's, you know, that's the way I look at it. Students should understand not only what to do, but understand the process of how to do it, I think, is where we're referring to. And so when we're asking students to read a chapter about a particular history assignment or a history book, you're setting the tone for what you want them to do. You want them to read the chapter. You want them to understand cause and effect to the start of the American Revolution. You're setting the tone for them to do that. I'm sorry?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Daring, can you explain your objection to this policy?
Yeah, so my issue was that I was interpreting it as saying that we cannot be doing those type of preparation activities that Ms. Latour just described. I might have misinterpreted it during the committee meeting, although the way Ms. Latour explained it now, I don't take issue with it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mrs. Lavelle, again, this is an item removed from consent. Would you please do a roll call?
Should we make a motion?
Oh, sorry, we didn't have a motion yet. Yes, I would. See, it's late. I'll entertain a motion to now approve 7.23.
So move.
Second. I have Mr. Ross followed by Ms. Regan.
Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe? Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Vado?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Raccio?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is item number nine, correspondence. Secretary Roscoe, please.
Thank you so much. So we have two thank-you notes. The first one, the cover reads, "Thank you for your kind expression of sympathy." And it reads, "Dear Board of Ed and Danielle Bellisi, On behalf of the McKay family, I want to say thank you for the beautiful floral arrangement in our time of need. Please know it gave us great comfort by your very kind gesture. Fondly, Roxanne and the McKay family." And our second thank you, "Dear Danielle and the Board of Ed members, Thank you so much for the beautiful flowers. They are stunning. We are enjoying them so much. Thank you for the kind words as well. Your thoughtfulness and kindness has truly touched me. I so appreciate it, Linda." And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. 10.1, Mr. Ross, ACES Governing Board.
I have no report from the last meeting.
Thank you. 10.2, Business Think Tank.
No new report.
Okay, we'll stay with you. STEM Steering Committee.
No new report.
Systemwide PTAC.
So at our last Systemwide PTAC meeting, we just had a lengthy discussion about outdoor education opportunities for students. Many teachers spoke, as well as parents, about the benefits to learning, hands-on learning outside of the classroom. So things like Nature's Classroom, Kinder Woods, et cetera. And at the point of time in which we concluded the conversation, it was going to be a topic that not only the school-based PTACs, but as a system-wide PTAC as well, would continue to discuss in the coming school year. Mrs. Bellisi gave an overview of the budget and where we stand in relation to its approval. Meeting schedules for next year were discussed. And parent choice nominations and the structure for that, since it is typically done at the end of the year, was also discussed. So it was a successful school year for Systemwide PTAC, and we look forward to many opportunities next year for discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Latour. Mrs. Turner, Special Education PTAC.
On May 5th, we had a revival of our Family Resource Fair after a few years of having to cancel it because of COVID. The Resource Fair was extremely, extremely successful. We had over 50 families from six different towns attend the fair with 38 vendors. Both the families and the vendors were all extremely excited to be out in person and being able to communicate and get some resources. We also would like to thank Chick-fil-A because they donated meals to all of our vendors, which was very much appreciated. Chick-fil-A's generosity to our district is amazing, so we just wanted to give them a little acknowledgement for that. Our next meeting is June 6th. We will be giving Ms. Curtis a farewell from our department, and we're going to invite parents to that piece. We're also going to discuss our next steps and our plans for next year.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mr. Reynolds is not with us. I'm going to assume there is no update for the Plan of Conservation and Development. Food Services Strategic Planning Committee. Has there been a meeting? No meeting, but there's one coming on Thursday. Thank you, Mr. Bondi. Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee.
I can speak to that. That's been postponed until September.
Wonderful. Facility Steering Committee. Mr. Vado?
At our last meeting, the committee really discussed, first of all, what our task would be. I think we were all a little, had different opinions. And we decided that basically it would be three areas that we would concentrate our efforts on, and we probably would not have to meet every month to do so. Obviously, the first one is the second facility study the state is asking us to do. Silver Petroselli has already, they have been awarded that task, and they're in the process. The second is track and field at Sheehan. Mr. Daring and Mrs. Costelli will be rating architects who submitted bids. That's where we are with that right now. Adult Ed location. As you all know, in the event that the town gets the grant to renovate the train station, we are not going to have a home for adult ed. I think we've been told nothing will happen before December of '23. Mrs. Bellisi and her staff have already looked at the police station, which will be vacated when the new one is built. And they're due to go back again and take a look. I think that it's a good idea because it can house both adult ed and board offices. It's town-owned. We don't have to pay rent. And maybe Mrs. Bellisi would like to expound upon that?
I agree. I think it's a viable option for us to continue to look at. The mayor has given us approval to add that to our study. And so Silver Petroselli will also include the police station in the study to see if it's a viable option for both adult ed and central office. Along with touring central office, they came through. They're going to tour adult education as well to gather some more information, to include those components when they report out to us at the end of September.
Wonderful. Thank you. We look forward to that when that starts up again in September. 10.10, the Cabe Report. I asked Mrs. Lavelle to include in everybody's packet, and I'm not going to highlight anything on here for the sake of time. But these are the activities that came out of the legislative session as highlighted by Cabe. What Mrs. Latour will do and Mrs. Bellisi is look at policies and things that need to be updated. Some of it is for this year, some of it is for further years out. And really, any of the changes that were passed and become legislative requirements, this is a document, or there'll be a similar document coming from the State Department of Education to all the superintendents, and that will be their guide moving forward to edit and modify documents in our policies, procedures, regulations, and whatnot. Or, and even curriculum. There's new curriculum that we're required to do now. So I don't need to belabor that. That is 10.10. Agenda item number 11, Old Business. I don't believe we have any. And then I am on to Instructional Committee. Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado.
Thank you. So the first item of business for Instructional. 12.1, we will not be doing any action on 12.1, which is Contract for the Superintendent. Item 12.2, Possible Approval of the Contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. I would like to make a motion to approve the contract as discussed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion passes. Item 12.3, I would like to make a motion to approve the Contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel as discussed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Item number 12.4, Approval of the Contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education. I would like to make a motion to approve the contract as discussed.
Second.
Mr. Vado, second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Okay, item number 12.5, Approval of the Business Manager's Contract. I would like to make a motion to approve the Contract of the Business Manager's Contract as discussed.
Second.
Mr. Vado, second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Item number 12.6, which is the Possible Approval of the Food Service Director's Contract. We are not taking any action on this particular item tonight. Next item is 12.7, which is the Approval of Acceptance of Resignation. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Katie Checo effective June 30th, 2022. Katie Checo has been a TSAL teacher since March of 2019.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Next is item number 12.8, the Approval of Acceptance of Retirement. And I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Donna Mitchell effective, sorry, excuse me, June 30th, 2022. Donna Mitchell has been a science teacher, she's actually been a biology teacher, since August of 1992 for a total of 30 years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Mr. Vado, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Next. Item number 12.9, we have the Presentation of a 2021 through 2022 Annual Teacher Evaluation Report. At this time, we will hear from Mrs. Bellisi.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I would just like to quickly go through and report out in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 10-151B regarding our evaluations. So on June 9th of 2021, our Acting Commissioner, Charlene Russell Tucker, had issued the flexibilities to be implemented for our Connecticut Guidelines for Educator and Evaluation for this current school year. We did adopt those through our PDEC Committee and then again through the Board of Education. And those were brought about because of the impact of COVID and some of the changes that we were all experiencing throughout the district. So this really had a focus on not just the academic for our students, but also the social-emotional learning and the overall well-being of our students, our staff, and our educators. So through these flexibilities this year, we provided and facilitated support and feedback and growth for our educators in accordance with the program. So it was a change from our regular evaluation program that we had. It encompassed more of our informal observations throughout. This is what the state had issued out and recommended, and we chose to adopt it last year in its entirety. Through that process this past year, just of note, we had 496 tenured teachers and 115 non-tenured teachers and certified educational specialists that were evaluated through our education evaluation system. We had 31 administrators that were evaluated through the Wallingfords Administrator Evaluation Process. And that process for both of these included, for the administrators, student learning indicators. For our teachers, we had student learning objectives. We made sure that we had met with them numerous times throughout the year for their goal-setting. And they also had an end-of-year, they will have an end-of-year summative for this current school year. We also had 37 trained cooperating teachers host student teachers. In addition to the State of Connecticut Teacher Induction Program, we had for team, we had 23 mentoring teachers that worked with our beginning teachers. We had 14 of those at the elementary level, three at the middle school, and six at the high school level. Through all of their support, they're able to also provide another lens to our teachers in terms of meeting with them for lesson planning, making sure that they are looking at the data and analyzing, you know, doing a data analysis so that that can drive their instruction. So we found that that has been very beneficial, and we've had a lot of success with teachers looking to be trained and continue on. So that is the portion of the evaluation process. And then Professional Development Program. So you'll see the second piece of this. We have included all of the district's professional development. You'll see the schedules of what we've offered throughout the year thus far. And, you know, it's a pretty comprehensive list in terms of curriculum and instruction and assessment, social learning, diversity and equity. So we're going to continue to make sure that for our following school year, you know, the next school year, we continue to provide professional development for the next school year, we continue to provide professional development from what we've had and what we're moving on.
Thank you. So, thank you, Mrs. Belizzi. Item 12.10, or 12.10, which is discussion and possible approval of the Proposed Educator Evaluation Plan, including teacher/administer evaluation flexibilities for 2022 through 2023. And there is a CSDE correspondence. And I believe at this time, we're going to hear from Mrs. Belizzi again.
Yes, you are. So this portion, I provided a chart for you to see the difference between our, the Wallingford Teacher Evaluation Plan, our original plan, and then how the flexibilities have been implemented over the next three years. So these past two years, the state has recommended a flexibility, lots of flexibilities to their evaluation. So that did change. We did adopt it through the PDEC Committee and then on through the Board. This current year, the state had made note that they were looking to revise the Teacher Evaluation and Administrator Evaluation Plan, but it is not complete. So they are recommending again to continue and extend the flexibilities from the current school year, what we're currently doing now, to continue on for one more year. We did meet as a PDEC Committee and discuss this, and did decide at the PDEC Committee to agree to adopt the flexibilities. However, that needs to then come here, and you all need to decide if that is something you want us to continue moving forward.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll open it up to Board discussion. Does anyone have anything they want to talk about?
I think just, we talked about this at PDEC, and that the, the general consensus was rather than roll back to the previous two years, or to roll back to where we were only to have to change again, was the general consensus, that's not where we wanted to go, or the committee did not want to have to do that, knowing that there will be state regulations done, and that they will be coming forth, that they will forthcoming. So, I mean, it was a, we talked at length about it, and about it, and about the, this, all the, you know, the formal and informal. And I think as the committee, and Mr. Vado was very vocal about the informal and the formal evaluations, but I do think that given where we are and where we have been, that this is where we wanted to move forward. So, I mean, it's, we can only do so much with what the state has given us.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes. I, I just want to go on record saying that I am against this because, I won't vote for it, because I believe the observation section for first and second-year teachers, there's only a minimum, a minimum of three informal observations. I think there should be a formal one in there. I think, yes, you can learn a lot going into a classroom and seeing how things are done informally, but I, I will, I personally think as an administrator, I would like to see, I would like to see a teacher plan a lesson and see if that lesson has all the components of it written down, so that when I went into the classroom, I would be able to see how it worked out. And that's what I think a formal observation does allow. Therefore, I stated my objections to this flexibility plan, and I think if you don't do this, you, the other alternative is to go back to the original evaluation plan, which is in that first column on your packet. But anyhow, that's where I stood.
Clarifying, clarifying question. Did you just say, Mike, that if you, if we don't do the flexible, we have to do what we did two years ago? Okay, because I-
That's state.
I kind of agree with you, and I was going to ask Ms. Belizzi how she feels about brand-new teachers not having the opportunity to have a, you know, a full-fledged evaluat-
Formal?
Formal, yeah, formal, you know, evaluation, not evaluation, what's the word? Huh? Observation, thank you. Formal observation. How do you feel about that?
So I prefer, actually, the informal. They're small, unannounced visits. And again, they're info, they're minimum of three. So it doesn't mean that they cannot do more throughout the school year, but it's a minimum of three. I do feel that the informal observations, you can gather a lot of information, and you can still provide feedback and have a meeting and discuss the planning component, and discuss how they plan, and review all of the materials and, and the curriculum that they're using. So for me, I feel the unannounced visit is beneficial. I think you really get to see authentic teaching in the moment, and you get to see what's happening. Sometimes, and not all, but when it's for, when we're doing the formal, they fill out all of the paperwork for the formal observation, they'll do the lesson planning, they fill out that component, then the instruction happens, and then there's a follow-up. All very beneficial, but I think sometimes it's very planned, and it's not always authentic, not for everyone. But I do think in this particular time, you're getting immediate feedback, and they're more informal. So they're unannounced, and you get to see more, in my opinion.
Just as a clarifying, there, it's, this doesn't preclude a teacher from having a formal observation, it's just not a requirement. So if, if, if I'm understanding correctly, if administration feels a, a formal observation is needed, that can be done?
Correct. And it does not change a lot of our other components of the plan. So we still have our teacher and evaluation guide that we follow, so that if we need, if a teacher needs additional support, we still have our support plans that we provide, our instructional support plans, and those are a combination of formal and informal, depending on the level as they move through. So there are, you know, for us to adopt this, we have to adopt it in its entirety and the way it is. However, that being said, if there are concerns, it doesn't prevent us from taking further steps to support that teacher so that they can be successful, whether that is other forms of observations, additional informals, or other things that they are agreed to move on to.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Daring?
There's just one question, you might have already said this. The summative ratings at the bottom, I was just a little confused what that was, what that row is referring to.
So after the teachers are observed for their minimum informal observations, they do a goal-setting at the beginning of the year, they do one at the middle, and then one at the end, and that is all compiled together because each component weighs a different amount, and they get a summative rating. So it also calculates into different areas, if they're developing, if they come out effective, if they come out above, so that's where that summative is. One of the years, the first year of COVID, it was suspended, but then it was brought back.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
You need to take, ask for a motion, or make the motion, ask for a second?
So it looks like we are going to make a motion. I am going to make a motion to approve the Proposed Educator Evaluator, Evaluation Plan, including teacher/administrator evaluation flexibilities for 2022 to 2023. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? No more discussion. Mrs. Lovell, would you please give us a roll call for vote?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mr. Doring?
Yes.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Vado?
No.
Mrs. Raccio?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I apologize for my sleepiness. It's getting, it's getting late. We're almost there, everyone. Okay, item number 12.11, here we go. Discussion and approval to temporarily suspend Section 1A and B of Wallingfords Board of Education Regulation, IGCA-R, which is summer school, for the 2022 summer school session in accordance with Policy BFA, Suspension of Policies and Regulations. So is there discussion on the matter? This is Latour.
I just want to set some context.
Please do.
This particular policy is actually going up for review, the IGCA-R, in, I think tomorrow's meeting, to be, to be honest. But it won't go through consent until the end of June, which is late. The proposed, the two items, I'm asking you to pause. The last two years, due to COVID, we have paused these two sections of the policy based on the experiences that our students have had and the disruption to their learning that they've had due to COVID. With the first being out of school, last year, the instructional schedule, and then this year, just the number of absences alone that some students have due to having to stay out for COVID-like symptoms or COVID itself. My concern is that we want to give every student the opportunity to experience credit recovery in any way possible. So your particular regulation states that at the middle school and high school level, excuse me, that students can recover two credits, and I'm asking you to pause that because, as we've done in the last two years, we have let students, when feasible, take three credits. In addition, we have been very careful in terms of which students are allowed to take credit recovery. We did not, we paused the 50% average, and we allowed our building administrators to work with the school counselors, the students and the families, to make professional judgments on which classes they, they could move forward with for summer school. We did not take that lightly. We really worked hard for students who were showing progress towards, maybe they had a rough first quarter, second quarter, making up ground, missed it by a little bit. We tried to be equitable and fair for students who turned their academics around during the course of the year, and, and it worked out very well. We had one of the highest attendance rates in our summer school last year. The teachers were pleased with the progress that the students made, families and students were appreciative of the flexibilities that we provided for summer school, given the disruptions, and we would like to see that continue for this year. I will say, and you'll hear that in my administrative report, we have started the planning process for summer school already, so having this policy paused now enables our two summer school directors to continue to make progress in scheduling and planning. It's a very large undertaking, and they need all the time that they can get.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Daring?
So when you mentioned that the administrators are making this decision, is there any specific criteria or rubrics that they're looking at, or is it just the general factors that you admitted?
No, you know, we, we've had a lengthy conversation, I've had lengthy conversation with both principals, where we look at, there isn't any written guideline or criteria in the past, 50%, you'd have a F1 grade of 50% or higher. And so we're not looking at that student who has a 20 average for an F1 grade. We are looking at students who are close, but not quite there. We're looking at students who have, as I said, progressed through especially the third and fourth marking term, really trying to turn things around in terms of their grade. And, you know, the building principals work really closely with the school counselors to be able to afford students that opportunity.
Okay, that makes sense. What my concern was, that is a difficult issue, is you don't want to be pushing a student up to the next level if that's not in their best interest, while also not holding them back if that's not in their best interest either.
Correct.
It sounds like we have a good process for the administrators to make these professional judgment calls. Thank you.
And if there's any question, you know, they do check through my office, so that we're all on the same page.
Anyone else? Any other questions? I, I have a question. So the current regulation says credit recovery is restricted to two credits, correct?
Correct.
And this, this would allow them to have three credits, take three credits?
Correct. We don't do any more than three, just by nature of the time it takes during the course of the day to run three sessions of summer school. And so that worked out, as I said, really well the last two years due to the, the COVID pandemic, and, and that's why we're looking to seek your permission to pause it currently, and then potentially through policy revision, we'll continue that conversation for the long haul.
So it sounds, it sounds like we had several students that took advantage of that.
Yes, we did.
And were they all, so in my head, I'm thinking, you know, they're taking on a higher course load over the summer, right? So, and how, how did they do? I mean, did they, were they able to keep up and do all?
They were very motivated and invested in their work. The staff worked incredibly collaboratively with each other for students who had multiple classes, and it worked out very well for, for all parties involved. Were we 100% successful in regaining all three credits in some cases? No, but for the majority of students, it worked out in their favor.
Thank you. So any other, oh, Mr. Daring?
It's just feeding off, but I'm just curious, and you might not have these statistics offhand. Do you happen to know what percent of the students who are taking the three credits end up being successful, and what percent that take the two credits are?
Off the top of my head, no. But I did provide a report at the beginning of the school year, over the course of the summer, for the Board, and I can try to dig that up, Mr. Daring, that spoke to how many kids were enrolled in multiple classes beyond the two, and what the success rate was. You'll get similar reports over the summer from me regarding summer school as well, because I think it's important to keep you informed, but I will try to dig that up for you.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
It sounds to me that you wouldn't allow a student to take on that heavy a course load if they, if you truly didn't feel like they could handle it. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion for us to, for the Board to approve to temporarily suspend Section 1A and B of Wallingfords Board of Education Regulation, IGCA-R, Summer School, for the 2022 Summer School Session, in accordance with Policy BFA, Suspension of Policies and Regulations. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Vado, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado, for the Instruction Committee update. Turning this over to Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Costelli for Operations Committee.
I will keep this rather brief because it is getting very late. So on the Operations Committee, we went through the financial reports, and we're tracking those, and, but I think the biggest discussion that we had was around the enrollment in ECA, and whether or not to increase that enrollment beyond the five that we have already decided to do. And so I believe at the next Operations Committee, we are going to take that up again. Fingers crossed that we have a budget. I think the, the desire of the Board was to see where the budget landed before we can make a determination if we wanted to go over and above those five. So we do look forward to seeing that at the, on the next agenda. And that's what I'm going to go with, because it's late, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Costelli. Moving on to item number 14, new business. We do not have any new business at this time. Mrs. Belizzi, I'm turning it over to you for the Administrative Report.
Good evening again. Just to start off by saying, tonight was such a lovely evening. It's always wonderful to honor all of our students and their academic achievements, and also our retirees. So that was a wonderful evening, to start off that way, it was really nice. We are still planning with the remaining days. They have lots of events, as our student rep shared, happening still at the buildings. We still have senior proms and senior outings, and lots of award ceremonies that will happen within these next few weeks, which are exciting, along with our graduation, which is set for June 15th, for both of our high schools. So we're looking forward to all of those events. As was just mentioned, the budget is something that unfortunately, we weren't able to approve this evening, but I am hopeful, we'll wait to see what happens, now that the mayor has vetoed it, so we'll see what happens tomorrow evening, and then hopefully, we can find a time for a special Board meeting to then approve the budget and move forward that way. Contingent upon the budget being approved, it does delay some of our things that are- Contingent upon the budget being approved, it does delay some of our things that are happening, but we are continuing to plan for our teachers that will have to make some changes within our reduction in force. So we'll plan that coming up. And also, you know, just make sure then we can start our hiring. We do have a lot of open positions that we're looking to fill. And so once the budget, the budget is solidified, we'll be working very diligently to start that process. As was mentioned, our bus company, we did send out notification to let of our families know that we are officially switching to specialty transportation starting for July 1. So we already have communicated with specialty, and I know they have reached out to the current drivers to hold some information sessions if they are interested in continuing in employment and working with them. So we're looking forward to that as well. And at this point, I think I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Latour. She wants to share an update.
I just want to share a few things out of the Curriculum Office. We're winding down, obviously, with curriculum writing. And so in preparation for that, you know, our senior members of the Board know that June is typically a lot of curriculum. So we did separate the two meetings. There'll be a humanities and math meeting and then a science wellness and world language meeting. That way, it, it keeps hopefully the, the amount of curriculum that you need to read to a minimum. The Curriculum Office is in the process of PD planning for next year. So we have full days and early release days that we need to plan. The curriculum departments are working collaboratively together so that we have a cohesive professional development process and continuum for next year. And that is based, the, the topics will be based on legal shifts, curriculum shifts, continuing feedback that we receive from our teaching staff as well as social, emotional, school climate types of activities. And then finally, summer school planning is in the works. We are running three different programs this year out of the Curriculum Office. We will continue to do enrichment programs that we call Summer Sizzlers, and that menu will be going out to families shortly. Couple of examples are lots of different STEM opportunities, Makerspace, Space Camp, Animation and Video Creation Robotics, Art Classes as well as Theater Classes, Wellness, and lots of opportunities for Creative English Language Arts, Reading and Writing. The elementary program will include reading and writing remediation for our elementary students. We are running a English Language Multilingual Summer School for our students who are continuing to learn the language in addition to our credit recovery for middle school and high school. Credit recovery for middle school and high school is dependent on teaching staff specifically in terms of which courses we will run. We are continuing to advertise both internally and externally to ensure that we have enough staff to meet our student need in the different courses. So that's where we are currently. I'll have another update in June with more definitive summer school information in terms of what we were able to actually schedule.
Mrs. Turner, did you want to give an update? There we go.
I, I'll be real quick. So the big thing happening in the Special Education Department right now is our transfer to the new IEP system. Within the last two weeks, the amount of data and information that the state is requiring on a short term, with a short-term turnaround, has been, I would say, immense. So we are working very closely with IT in gathering that information. On that note, we have 18 staff members who are going to attend training this summer in the new IEP system. They will become trainers of training, or, yeah, trainers of trainers. There are representatives from every single school. So they will, each school will have a go-to individual in their building for the new system. Not only is it going to be IEPs, it'll be 504s. We are planning several parent trainings in the beginning of the school year in September, both in English and in Spanish, to support families in accessing and understanding the new document as well as the new system. There'll be a parent portal where the parents can access their child's IEP at any given moment, which will be wonderful for them. It's a really great aspect of the new program. Additionally, we have some training that myself and my fellow administrator, Special Education administrators will be attending in June. We have four sessions that we'll be attending. In terms of, finally, we are in the finalized process for Extended School Year, which is our Special Education Summer School. We're hosting it at Cook Hill and Mark T. Sheehan. We have around 300 students right now who will be attending summer school, either Monday through Thursday or Monday through Friday. That's it for us.
Thank you. Moving on to announcements, we do have a few. On Wednesday, May 25th, we will have a Special Board of Education meeting, and that will be in person in the Board of Education Conference Room, beginning at 5:00 PM. On Monday, June 6th, we have, we'll have our regularly scheduled instructional committee meeting via Google Meet. On Monday, June 13th, we will have a Operations Committee meeting, again on Google Meet. And as Mrs. Latour referred, we will have a second instructional committee meeting on Monday, June 20th via Google Meet. I also do want to point out that the activity schedules for both Lyman Hall and Mark T. Sheehan are in the Board packets. This is a very busy time of year, although not all of these activities are public events, like the start of senior final exams and underclassmen exams. They are meaningful to the schools and the students. But should any Board member want to attend a public event, please feel free to reach out to Mrs. Belizzi in accordance with our communication protocols, and she can share with you all of the details. The schedules look a little bit different, but there are very similar things on there. The date of our next full Board meeting is Monday, June 27th, here at the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers, beginning at 6:30. And with that, hearing or seeing no other official business before the Board, we can call this meeting adjourned. Thank you and have a good evening.